Welcome, everybody. Oops, sorry. Let's do the little tippy tap. You're real anxious to do the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to welcome everybody called to order the Board of Education meeting of July 8th, 2025. Standing as you are able, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. The disembodied voice leading us will be Zach Castor. Thank you very much. Zach, maybe we should have you do that every night?
Yeah.
All right. I do have a brief comment to make. So at the end of the last meeting, we bid a very hasty farewell to one of our board members who served with us for four years, six months, two days, and a couple of hours. But I wanted to, come on up here, Brad. I just wanted to say, on behalf of the board, I wanted to say a couple of things on your, just to say, and we've got a little farewell parting plaque for you. You can come around behind or up front if you want. I don't care. I did want to say, in addition to all the many, many things, you know, and if anyone on the board wants to say anything, I did want to say that Brad did have a catchphrase, "What can we do for you?"
Yeah, Brad.
I know, I know, and he meant it. He meant it from his heart. The next thing is, we had no treasurer when Brad began here, and we started up mutual discussions. We started up the idea of finally getting a treasurer on the board. Dennis Valenti was it for a couple of months, and then when he resigned, Brad took over, and he turned it into a real thing. God is a, we are all now well familiar with bulletin 1041 and other important minutiae of finance. And so, Brad, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board, and thank you very much. Good job, sir. Enjoy that fabulous retirement from the board. And then, of course, Brad is coming to this district as a teacher, and we are looking for, it's hard to find great teachers. It's hard to find excellent science teachers, and we've got two of them wrapped up here, Brad. It was a good choice to have you come to this district as a teacher. So I'm sure we will see you will not be a stranger. Thank you very much. I'd also like to ask our, somebody who's, it was a farewell, and now we're going to transition to a hello. I'd like to pass the mic over to Rachel Kowalski.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I first want to just express my gratitude to the entire Celine community for welcoming me. I've had the pleasure of just meeting so many incredible folks over the course of the last two months. Special thanks to Steve and his legacy and great onboarding support that he gave me. I really am grateful to the entire leadership team as well here tonight. I also have had the opportunity to meet countless residents so far. In some of these travels, we've gotten to share some meals together and some Celine stories and some history, and so I appreciate that. And in every opportunity I've had, it is very evident the care and concern for students, and that comes through in all of those things. My first community adventure was the Celine Food Truck Festival, which was very yummy. I also got to meet some amazing teachers there who were very excited to, I was very excited to meet them. They're enjoying their summer, and they well deserve summer. I also was able to meet a Celine High School student who asked about snow days from the get, and I will never tap Snow Day Steve, so we'll continue to, you know, really key in on the weather as the weather turns cold. I promised her that as such. We've also got some other community engagement opportunities planned for the summer at some community events, and then Ms. Martin and I will be, you know, releasing some additional dates and some plan to meet additional folks in the community, parents, students, and stakeholders. And I also just would want to say thank you to the board for, I'm just absolutely humbled to be here, humbled to serve alongside you. I've met some parents as well, surprisingly, in my Facebook Marketplace. I'm trying to get a home together, so I've met a couple of parents accidentally, and that's been wonderful as well. So everyone's been wonderful, so encouraging and welcoming. And with that, that would be my first comments to the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Rachel. We're really excited to have you here. So let's dive back into the agenda. There is no public comment, that's correct? Okay. And I do, we do have one extended public comment from Stacy Rumza. And you know the drill, Stacy.
Oh, now it's really green. Well, well, I'm sorry. So I'm Stacy Rumza, the executive director for the Foundation for Celineary Schools, and I appreciate you all letting me give you an update on what the foundation has been up to for this past school year. So we'll move on to the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot I had this. Okay. So for, actually, and this is going to be a year in review, but I'm going to start off with the 2025-2026 Executive Committee and the Board of Trustees. So you can see here, I won't read off all the names, but you can see who our trustees are, along with our Executive Committee, our district reps, and our student reps, which I'll get to in just a few minutes. So, and actually, the picture's kind of small, but Dr. Kowalski was actually able to be in the picture with us, so that was kind of fun at our last trustee meeting. I'd like to give a special thanks to Sarah Caruana and Tom Costigan. They have been on the Board of Trustees for many years, and we appreciate all they've done. So they have rolled off, and we are bringing on two more. Sarah Kleinow on the left, and then Amy Goode on the right. So we're excited to welcome them to the team. So we'll be doing some onboarding with them. And we bid farewell to our senior representative, Grace Obersky. So proud of her. She was an amazing ambassador for the foundation. She is heading off to Grand Valley, where my daughter goes, go Lakers, and will be running track there as well. So we were very honored to have her for a couple of years. And moving into her role as senior rep is Bryce Naidig. He was previously our junior representative, so he will continue on as senior. And then this year, we did something a little different, where we're going to have two junior reps, both somewhat new to the community, and both so talented and bring different things to the foundation. So it's going to be fun working with them. Brooke Jean-Marie, and then Dante Costanzo. So they will be starting in August. This past year, for our 24-25 sponsors, we had 39 sponsors total, eight being new this past school year, and 73,500 is what was donated cash and in kind. So you can see our list of sponsors there. Very fortunate to have these and are so supportive and so crucial in being able to provide the grants that we can do. Sponsorship renewals, that's what I'm working on right now. So for the 25-26 school year, we are bringing on two new sponsors, Liebherr and H&R Block, and they are looking to both be gold sponsors. And so, so far, I have brought in, or have renewed, I should say, $60,000, which I'm continuing to work on this summer to get all of our sponsors renewed and get a new lineup for the upcoming school year. Onto events, in 2024, in the fall, we had our Free Fall Luncheon, and we brought in $40,000 in donations and had 165 attendees, and it was really nice to see everybody. I mean, we had several grants represented by the teachers and their students. So it's always nice to kind of see and have our community see what their donations are going towards. Our really big event was so much fun. It was our beads and beets event. We brought in $90,000 in total revenue and $65,000 net revenue, and we were sold out. We had 220 attendees, and we could not go past that. So got lots of good feedback. It was a lot of fun. We're going to do it again in February of next year. So more information to come on that. Our fourth annual Superintendent Circle Dinner happened back in April. We had for a total of 20 private donors that donate $1,000 or more towards the school year. So that was nice. And Max Acadian Seafood, Wally McNeil, who owns it, is one of our top sponsors and always provides a five-course meal to all of those that are in that category. Our kindergarten and young five open houses took place, as well as Heritage, which was a new one that the foundation's been a part of. We were able to provide 150 bags, and we had, you could see there, that's our list of sponsors who donated little tchotchkes for the bags, with coupons, pencils. It's part of all of the sponsorship packages, and it is optional, but we had quite a few that provided good stuffed cinch sacks. So that was a lot of fun. And Dr. Kowalski, you could see there, got to meet Andy the Acorn. She was at the Harvest Open House, so that was a lot of fun, and the kids have a good time. We do, too. This past school year, we, our Board of Trustees approved $100,000 in grant funding. We didn't spend all of that, like we normally do, so we're going to push in for more grants, but we did over $90,000 in grant funding for a total of 35 grants. And you can see here, pictures are kind of small, but these are some of our grants in action. Down near the bottom, you can see the solar car that was done with Mr. Stuckey and Jackson Phillips, one of our students, and his class is going to continue to learn from that. You could see, we had salmon in the classroom, the Rube Goldberg Project extension again, the shark and the dissection of the shark in the classroom, the 3D printer. So these are just some examples. Oh, and then the unified basketball up there in the corner. So those are some of the things that we've done. Our Hall of Fame has been slow to be announced. We're working on getting everybody's information, but this is the official list. Notha Kella is being nominated for, oh my gosh, I just drew a complete blank, community, community volunteer, distinguished community volunteer. Distinguished is what I was trying to think of. Distinguished Community Volunteer, thank you. Chris Baker as distinguished alum, Peggy Ernst as distinguished educator, Mackenzie Gilmore as distinguished alum, Zach Castor, our very own, as distinguished alum, Rick Radloff distinguished alum, and then Betty Washburn as distinguished educator. This is going to take place on October the 10th at 5:00 at the Celine High School Auditorium. We will have a one-hour ceremony to honor these individuals and give them a chance to speak. It's so much fun to listen to the stories. It makes you really appreciate Celine and where it has been and where it's going. It's a really nice event. And then we'll take everybody and move them over to the patio at Hornet Stadium for a light lunch, and they'll be honored at halftime. Future dates that are coming up will be a part of the Celine Summer Fest, August the 9th. The Alumni Committee, as part of the foundation, is going to be having their annual golf outing on September 21st at 9:30 at Brookside. Hall of Fame, as I just mentioned, October 10th. Our Free Fall Luncheon is going to be on October 22nd. It's either going to be here at Liberty or possibly at the high school to show off the new STEAM Center, and then our dueling pianos on February 20th or 21st. We're working on those details. So that's what's coming down the pike. And then I moved. So if you need to find me, you can now find me in room number four. I am diagonal from the boardroom right next to community ad, so you can find me there if you need me. And that's it. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Stacy. We don't usually offer questions, but if we have any, I'm sure we'll shoot them your way.
That sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all.
Great work, great work, of course.
Thank you.
Revisions and approval of the agenda. I do have, was recommended by at least one board member that we add a discussion item 10A under section 10, item A. Just an update on the status of the vacancy, replacement for the vacancy on the board. And I just have a few words about that, and we will open it as a discussion item. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as revised.
So moves, Deben.
So Tim Austin seconding it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Five-zero. Kind of thin this evening. We have one scheduled report, and Jay Grossman is going to entertain us.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to report on my technology team, give you an annual update of all the things that we've done throughout the year, some of the stuff we're working on, some of the things we've got going on, so you can see all the wonderful things that we've been doing. I always love to start this report by touting my team. First off, keep in mind that we are a team of nine managing the entire district. In the past year, we have received over 3,368 tickets. That's an increase of, from 2,898 last year. I did some quick math. That's about 470 more tickets that we addressed over the course of this past year. Of those, we closed 3,339 tickets. There are 22 currently open and seven that are pending some sort of resolution, like waiting for parts or response from somebody else before we can close those out. In addition to addressing all the tickets and our daily tasks of working with staff and students, we also provide support for over 2,100 daily-use student devices and over 750 staff devices. In addition to that, we also maintain about 700 shared managed devices that we use for testing time. We call them our testing fleets. We have a grade levels worth per building, Heritage Middle School, High School. And on top of that, a small taste of what the rest of my team does throughout the year. We are maintaining Power School. We are preparing trainings for our staff. We are prepping devices. We're doing audio/video installations throughout the year, as well as, especially now more than ever, we are taking cybersecurity measures as a very serious thing and trying to do our best in increasing that. Most of you may remember our phishing campaign from a few months ago, and we are working on training for that so that we have better results on that for the next one I put out. I will not divulge when that's going to be. And then another project that we are actually working on, AI has become a big thing, and so we have actually started working on developing our own in-house AI. We're actually working with Dexter, who has implemented a model throughout their building. It's cost-effective, as in we don't have to pay a yearly price for it. We just, one time, buy a computer. And so we have been working on developing that with a couple people on my team who are very into that project, and our goal is to get that out to staff and students this coming fall. So that's what we've done as a whole this year. Some of the projects that we've been working on, first off, over last summer, we completed the replacement of our copy machine fleet with our more energy-efficient Epson copiers. We have completed the standardization of AV for all K3 classrooms, which includes new projectors, document cameras, sound systems, and we added wireless mirroring with screen beams. We also consolidated, replaced, and configured network switches in all 42 of our network closets. I'll add that we also added four more network closets to the district as a result of some of our ongoing construction projects, and we do have a couple more still coming with some of the upcoming projects, too. We're also working this past year on, we are transitioning from our communication platforms. We are consolidating from using Remind, School Messenger, Smore, into Parent Square, getting all of our training, getting that pushed out so that staff and families know how to use it, making sure it works, putting it through all the tests that we can to make sure we are aware of how to use it and support everybody as that will be our new primary communication platform to our families. We are also switching our data warehousing from Illuminate to School Lytics and getting all of that information copied over, access, everything that we need so that when teachers come in this fall, that they're able to hit the ground running and access their data. And additionally, we are switching off of our internet filtering. We are moving away from Securely, and we are going to be joining the rest of Washtenaw County in a new filter that we found called LineWise. I'm actually very excited about this, and I think a lot of our staff will be, too. Heard a lot of feedback about Securely, and I'm hoping that that feedback about LineWise is a lot better. Another thing that we also completed this year was bringing the Hornet Operation Building online. So we were integral in installing fiber from the middle school to the operations building so that we can get internet, essential for communication for our buses, HVAC services, phones, internet, everything that we use there on a daily basis that requires internet. Also configured all the phones, the Wi-Fi, cameras, brought Informacast to that building, as well as access controls for the doors. Been a pretty busy year. Currently, right now, this summer, we have been working on continuing our AV standardization project. Thanks, Ben. So in continuation from what we did with our K3 buildings, we are now carrying that to all classrooms at Heritage Middle School, Liberty and the high school. That's including replacing projectors, document cameras, and sound systems in those rooms. And in this, these buildings, we are also adding a secondary monitor to every classroom, and then wireless mirroring, not only to the projector, but we're also going to be able to go to, to mirror to the secondary screen as well, so with the intent that students will be able to have better sight of what's going on in the classroom. Also preparing our trainings and documentation for our new communications platform. And in addition to the new filtering, we are also bringing on a new classroom monitoring software. We used to use what's called Go Guardian for teachers to be able to use to watch what's going on on the students' computer screens while they're in class, helps with classroom management. This new product, ClassWise, goes along with our filter, LineWise, to offer the same flexibility, but also give teachers a little bit more control as they are in their classroom. And the hopes for this is it will actually cut down on some of the tickets because they'll have a little bit more granular control over some of the sites that are blocked, such as if they're trying to access Nike.com for a report, and it's blocked because of shopping. Teachers will now have the ability to temporarily allow that through for just their classroom, which will reduce tickets coming in for us to have to open up that site for the whole district. Again, hoping that they're going to appreciate that a lot more than having to put in a ticket and wait for us to get around to it. As I mentioned, we're going to continue developing our AI, both in-house as well as bringing some platforms into the district. We currently use Brisk as an AI platform. Most recently, Google has announced that both Gemini and Notebook LM are going to be reduced from 18-plus to 13-plus. So we have plans to start working with our high school students during Hornet time, teaching them proper AI literacy, and then once they have completed some sessions in that, we want to invite them to be able to start using these platforms. We do realize it's a disservice for these students now to not have exposure to AI. It is almost a requirement, if it's not already a requirement in college, to be able to use that, and we want to bridge that gap and allow them to be on par or ahead of their fellow classmates. Some other things that we're working on, summer preparation for district devices, classroom equipment for the upcoming school year. My team likes to move as an amoeba as we go from building to building. We clean and prep all of the devices, touch every single Chromebook and iPad, clean every single projector, document cameras, check the batteries, make sure everything is ready to go. So when teachers come back in August, it's all there, and when students come back that first, that last week of August, that it's all running and functional, and they can get started without having to wait on us. Some other things we're doing, we are replacing older fiber in Heritage Middle School and Liberty. This will allow us to reach faster speeds in the district. And then also getting ready, and we've been working on the technology installation part for the weight room and the STEAM Center at the high school. Some of our last things that we have, upcoming projects, we have been working on technology for the Liberty Athletics Field. That has been a large project involving rerouting all the fiber, as we found they were going to be building right on top of it. So we had to reroute all of our internet that connects the middle school to all the buildings around it. That has been done successfully. We are also prepping Wi-Fi and cameras, as well as Informacast for that. Once the field is built, we'll be continuing that project, as well as technology installation for the middle school renovations, the classroom wing, the senior center, robotics, and cosmetology, which we'll be bringing online for next, the 2026-27 school year. Lastly, we are working on the technology designs for the upcoming Heritage Construction Project, as well as we are getting ready to replace all staff devices this coming April with new device, well, new computers. So look forward to seeing me in a few months to ask for support on that one. And that's about it. So I do thank you all for your continued support. I am happy to answer any questions you might have about any of the things we've done, doing, plan to do, want to do.
Thank you, Jay. Shortened to the point. Any questions from the crew so far? I have so many questions, but you have one as well. Do you want to start?
Thanks for all that hard work. Clearly, it's been a lot, and to the whole team of nine, thank you. So I love that you were talking about AI and working on that for this fall. I just wanted to remind you that we have four policies on artificial intelligence now in our, on our website that affect both staff and students. So was just asking if you had any ideas to kind of communicate both to staff and students, and maybe work with Jackie, or how you would communicate any intentions with the AI project that you have going on in alignment with our board policy.
Sure. I'm happy to talk about that, and I actually appreciate working on you with that board policy. I had a chance to review it, make some suggestions on it myself. Have also been integrating that into our revised AUP for both staff and students, with the intent to have staff re-sign their AUPs this year, largely in part so that they're aware of some of our guidelines, and also to give some direction towards that. One of the members of my team, Jordan, is working with Jackie, and she is our tech integration specialist. She will be working with the classrooms in doing the AI literacy, promoting the AI that we have, so we can make, make staff and students aware of what we have, and so that they can use it and be effective in using it.
Thank you. By the way, just a side note regarding policies. I'm not sure if I brought this up at the last meeting, but Jay and I did have a very good meeting to get some deep background on policy language changes for videotaping. And yes, so we've removed references to Betamax and VHS and that sort of thing. So that ship has long since sailed. So I wanted to say thank you very much for embracing the idea of having our own in-house AI. Appreciate that. I attended a presentation back in December by the folks from Dexter and was so impressed. Now, they call theirs DD after Dexter Dreadnoughts. Do we have, that was, that was actually the hardest thing for them to come up with the name. Do we have a cool name for ours?
We're going to use Sting.
Sting? That'll work.
Sting.celineschools.org.
Okay, that works very well. Next question is, what sort of tech installations are we putting in the weight room? Are we talking about just like fiber for Wi-Fi, or is there some special cool devices that are going to be on walls?
The weight room will be, we've got televisions going in that will be able to display the workouts they have, as well as some extra TVs in classroom, in the more classroom sections of it. We've got Wi-Fi cameras. We have an audio system that we're installing in there because they like to listen to music when they're working out. That's all going to be integrated in together. We've got screen beams so they can wirelessly project. Take that a step further during, in the STEAM section that we're doing, we're also going to, I'm kind of excited for this. We're making a video wall, so we'll have like a nine-panel LED that will be able to be projecting our projects, any information onto it. So that's also getting installed now as well.
That was a lot more than I was expecting. Thank you so much. So Remind is being phased out, Securely is being phased out, Go Guardian is being phased out, and are we, I just wanted to verify, we are phasing out Brisk as well, Brisk teaching?
No, Brisk, we're keeping.
Brisk we're keeping, but we're also adding the Gemini LM. There's a Notebook LM, and there's, yeah, that's it, yeah. And Notebook LM is 13-plus, yeah.
Yes, Notebook LM, Gemini, Brisk, and then our in-house.
So we won't be able to say goodbye to that strange little icon we see in the bottom corners out there? Okay. Which some people don't know how to remove, and that's okay. Well, thank you, Jay. I have no more questions. Anything else in the word? No. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the big reveal in the fall. Thank you very much. Thank you. We have a few recommended motions. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the closed session minutes of June 10th, 2025, for the purpose of collective bargaining, 8C of the Open Meetings Act. I'm going to assume Darcy's going to move on that. Well, Darcy, don't give it to us yet. We don't have a motion. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Tim.
Second.
Extra pressure tonight because there are only five of us, Jason, you got. Thank you. Tim and Jason.
Darcy, I just had one added. I wasn't present at the meeting.
It just felt like you were there. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you. We have minutes. I'd like to entertain.
Michael, one abstention.
Oh, you're abstaining?
Yeah.
No, we could do that, but okay. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint, in, in the absence of, of our treasurer, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Tim Austin as a board treasurer per policy zero one five two, officers. You're making that motion, Darcy, without the mic on? Thank you.
Oh, right.
That's right.
Second.
Okay. Who is, also serves on the finance committee, which is a sterling endorsement then. Thank you very much. Do we have any discussion on this?
Darcy beat me to the motions.
Okay. Tim, this is your opportunity to say no. All right, thank you. That's great. Then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed? And hearing none. We have a new treasurer. Thank you very much, Tim. Our third treasurer. Yeah, right. Well, who's keeping track except for me? Five zero. Thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, per board policy twenty-five ten, the following textbook and associated ebook digital license, Impact, second edition, by National Geographic Learning at an annual cost of eleven forty-five, one thousand one hundred and forty-five, as submitted by Cara Davis, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And the framing note is that this will provide a comprehensive and cohesive curriculum for six twelve, grades six to twelve, English language learners. Do we have a motion?
So moves, Deben.
Support.
Support from Darcy Burwick. Any comments, questions, queries, quibbles? Cara is ready to address any concerns. Well, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Cara Davis, for finding that text. I'd like to entertain a motion to name the following banks or depositories for the various funds of Saline Area Schools in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, Bank of Ann Arbor, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, and the old National Bank.
So move.
Tim Austin moves.
Second.
Tis it is. Seconds. Any discussion? No? Thank you. This is pretty pro forma. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Five zero. Thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize Rachel Kowalski, Superintendent, as the primary signer on all checks written by the district with Miranda Owseley, Assistant Superintendent of Finance, as alternated on all accounts listed. And those accounts are the following. This is quite a list. The twenty-twenty-one bond checking account, twenty-twenty-three bond checking account. Don't want to miss any, excuse me. The twenty-twenty-five bond checking account, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, which includes the twenty-twenty-one bond investment account, twenty-twenty-three bond investment account, twenty-twenty-five bond investment account, general fund investment account. And from old National Bank, the general fund, general fund payroll, community education, recreation cares, food service, student activity, student activity, the edge, flex benefits, Maestro, twenty-sixteen BNS debt service, twenty-eighteen BNS two debt service, twenty-twenty-one BNS three debt service, twenty-eighteen refunding debt service, twenty-twenty-three BNS one debt service, twenty-twenty-five BNS two debt service, the sinking fund, Paul Handy Scholarship Fund, the Tim Corrali Memorial Fund, the Horticulture Award, Randy Hoffman Fund, the Rachel Townsend Fund, the Dor May Meyer Memorial Scholarship, and the Catherine Steiner Burr Scholarship. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Burwick.
Burwick.
Second.
Tim Austin seconds. Any discussion on that? Probably not. So all in favor, don't make me repeat that list. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Five zero. Appreciate that, everyone. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize Rachel Kowalski, I've heard that name before, Superintendent and Miranda Owseley, Assistant Superintendent of Finance, as signatories on transfers of investment monies.
Motion, Burwick.
Burwick.
Support.
JT, thank you very much. Any comments? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Five oh, five zero. Recommended motion, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for continued participation in the State Michigan Loan Revolving Fund as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Miranda Owseley.
Motion.
Thank you, Jason.
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion on this? No? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Miranda. I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint the Trune Law Firm, PC, of Lansing, Michigan, and Collins and Blaha, PC, as legal counsel for the school district or board for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. In addition, the district is authorized to utilize other law firms pending areas of expertise.
So moves, Deben.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Second, Burwick.
Thank you, Darcy. Any discussion? Nothing to say? All in favor, please say aye.
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 This is a lot faster than it was the last time we did this one. And discussion items. Right. Oh, that was it. Thank you. Wow, that, we just whipped through those. That was remarkably fast.
Happy summer.
Happy summer, everybody. This, we've, we've, we've shot past the record-setting time of eighteen minutes though, so that's all right. We'll settle in. It'll be a comfortable time. We do have a vacancy open. We have put out, we cast our net out to the community and seven stout citizens, well, strong citizens is probably a more appropriate word, have stepped forward and provided their materials. And I'm going to read those names tonight. This morning, I emailed everybody and all of them and let them know this was happening, gave them an opportunity to say, eh, second thoughts and so forth. They're all still in the running apparently, and the names are as follows. And we will provide information next week. I'm in the process of redacting some of the information, phone number and email, but we'll keep the address on because the question, major question is, do they live in the district? So the address should stay. And those names are Ryan Davidson, Nathan Nate Hansen, Luke Schmumberg, Kristy Lilly, Kelly Van Single, Julie Kelly, and Marco Celsius Magapataang. And Monday, July fourteenth, we look forward to interviewing those who are able to attend the interviews. And we'll begin at six-thirty that evening and we'll do deliberation that night. In the past, we had done our interviews and then deliberated at a later meeting, but we are very crunched for time and scheduling made it difficult to have any other nights. That was my report. Is there any notes or discussions about this before we move on?
So we did receive an email from one of the candidates wanting to interview tonight after the board meeting. So I guess I'm bringing this up as an option. If we want to do that tonight, I mean, I'm open to it. It does, board policy zero one four two point five does say something about, let me, interviewing all candidates. Section C says, shall, shall interview all interested candidates to ascertain their qualifications.
Hey, Tim, can you give me that policy number again? I just wanted to read along.
Policy zero one four two point five.
I have heard from two other board members regarding that. And one of the issues that came up, Tim, is that it, it appears that having interviews this evening would be an accommodation, which is ordinarily fine, except the original call we put out to the community never mentioned the possibility of accommodations. And the problem with that is that suddenly then it becomes unbalanced. There might have been two or three or more or any number of candidates who might have been interested in participating, but knew that they wouldn't be available on July fourteenth, so didn't put their names forward. Knowing that we have made accommodations for one, suddenly changes the rules, which is what I have heard strongly iterated to me by two board members. So that's why I'm a little hesitant to, to go into that or have an interview tonight. And I got to tell you, for the last two weeks, I have been wrestling with this and, and talking, getting counsel from all of you over the phone and by email and by text as to what to do. And there's no clear resolution, but let's keep the discussion going.
If we're going to continue?
We are. If you keep talking, then we are.
I'll keep talking. You know me. Regarding that, I, I, I agree that we didn't, we didn't explicitly say, hey, by the way, we're going to accommodate anybody. The way I look at it, and I was having this conversation with a colleague today, you, you have to want it to deserve it. And by that, I mean if, if somebody is interested and wants to come and interview and they're not going to be available, they're going to be completely out of pocket when we're going to perform the other interviews. And they're willing to go first, they're willing to allow the other candidates to hear the questions in advance and have that advantage. I think, I think those people that are willing to do that are stepping up and showing that, that they want it that much, that they're willing to take, to take that disadvantage and give other candidates an advantage of, of hearing those questions in advance. So if there are candidates here tonight, I, I would certainly entertain giving them the interview tonight.
My concern with that is it's not an exam where there are correct, right or wrong answers. And having the other six candidates prepare scripted speeches in advance isn't an advantage. That doesn't tell us how they think, what their answers are at the moment. And at that point, why are we even having interviews? I mean, you and I had talked about that with the superintendent interviews, the providing of that first round scripted questions. We got scripted answers. I don't think altering our process and our commitment to the community speaks well for us and how we present ourselves and how we hold ourselves accountable. And so if we wanted to change the process, I think that we should have done that for everyone.
And if I can add, that, that was the, the arg, I, I really hesitant to speak on behalf of a board member who's not here, but that was the, basically the argument that came to me from, from Lauren, who is not here tonight, is that she was strong, she stood in strong opposition to changing the rules, what appears to be us changing the rules by, by making an accommodation. But in all the discussions back and forth, one comment did come up that made it very clear to me that there is, there is a way forward. And that's, we, we, we should consider all the candidates. So if candidate X, let's say, couldn't make it on the fourteenth, that we would consider that person's candidacy based on the materials that we have available to us. And to me, that seems fair and kind and it doesn't mess around, and human. And it doesn't mess around with the idea of getting the questions out there. And to your point, Darcy, about having people prepare. Those of us who ran for the board a few years back, I don't know if you were here for that one, Tim, they gave us the questions. And basically, we, we basically read a, each five-minute book report or, you know, each of us. And that was, it was not much of a live forum. Not saying that these interviews are going to be a forum by any means, but I get, I wanted to say to everyone, I get your point, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I guess I, I look at it like we are changing the rules because we're not interviewing all candidates?
We are making that opportunity available. We can make accommodations for Zoom, for a phone call, for an email on the day of. This, to me, is an exception in changing the process that we publicized multiple times in multiple locations.
And if anybody else, I mean, anybody could have asked if they were interested to, to, to see this. Or to see if we could do something.
And I think we need to do better next time. Like, I think we need to make this.
So I think we're, but.
More accommodating.
Of doing the, of allowing us to still utilize their information that they have provided on the fourteenth. Yeah, that's great, but, but we're already putting them at a disadvantage now because they didn't answer the questions from an interview standpoint.
Right.
So we're, we're putting them at a disadvantage.
I think we can make those questions available in advance within a certain timeframe. But publicizing them a week in advance is not going to help us make a better decision in the end.
Line of the policy, and I know Jennifer has a comment, all, the board or an ad hoc committee, doesn't even have to be the whole board, appointed by the board, shall interview all interested candidates to ascertain their qualifications. Yep. Jennifer?
Yep, thanks. So yeah, I've been wrestling with this one too. My first recommendation, since this is the third time we've done an appointment in my tenure, and probably Michael's, it's probably your third as well. I think we should look to add something in the future to the board operating procedure so it's not so gray because gray in policy and procedure isn't so gray. So if we can put a pin in that, that would be great. I, I don't know if we've said who the candidate is. Okay, then I don't, I don't want to go ahead and do that if I don't have permission to do that. It's not lost on me, this candidate's connection to the district, which I highly value, particularly at a time right now. That said, when I make decisions, I try to think about the policy, about the data. So I have to think about the whole versus the one individual. But I do want to stand still by, by recognizing the, the tie to the district, which is strong. The line that Tim referenced, I think is important. It says, "All interested candidates." I do read it a little bit differently than Tim, I think, though, because I do think that we should interview all candidates. I think it should be on the day that we said we would interview all candidates. So I don't recall if this particular applicant could call in, could Zoom in, but I, I kind of do feel that we put it out there that this is the opportunity. It followed the exact precedent that, in way we did it the two times prior. We said, here's the date that the interviews will be. I think we should interview everyone who applied absolutely. I think we probably should do it on that date, though, because it does seem like an exception to me a little bit.
I appreciate that. I would also note, since we're talking about that one line, line C, it also does say that the board shall interview interested candidates. And at this point, we don't have the board. We have arranged, one of our board members can't be here tonight and had made special arrangements to be here on the fourteenth. So that's another argument, I, in my opinion, for not doing a proper full interview with those sets of questions tonight. But it's no, it should be no hindrance to considering all the candidates.
Can I just follow up on my question because I know you probably had individual conversations with the applicant? Is there any way? There is no way. Okay.
As I noted in the email, within seconds, I reached out to the candidate and found out that Zoom was not even considered commendation, accommodation that we could use because of the nature of her absence, their absence, traveling.
Phone call? Because Zoom implies video.
Seven-hour time difference, which is another issue. Yeah, so. So I'm not sure if we want to formalize this or we just want to land this plane and say, let's just continue on and, and make sure that we consider that candidate. Perhaps we could ask the candidate if they're willing to provide other additional information. And in fact, the candidate, the applicant has sent us letters of reference and possibly may be able to speak to us tonight during the public comment section, potentially. It's not a full interview, Jason, but it does also maintain the integrity of the handful of questions that we had. And I, I want to say, I appreciated everybody's thoughtful comments on this and it was not clear. It was not clear except that. It was not clear, except that the statement that we put out didn't offer any options for accommodations. And that, to me, was like the bottom lines. And the other bottom line is that one of our board members isn't here, so anyway. Any comments before we move on, or make it take a vote, or?
No, I mean, I think with Jennifer, we really need to look at updating the policy and procedures.
In fact, as I looked at my revisions of the board operating procedure, there wasn't anything down for vacancy, although I knew the last time we did this that, oh, we better have a clear policy in case this ever happens again. We never know when this will happen again, so.
Yeah, that's true. And I just wanted to, like, yeah, it's really unfortunate, but I think we kind of have to stick with what we said we were going to do. And these recommendation letters, I have them in front of them. I think I know most of the people that wrote these. I truly, truly value their opinion, and I truly value all applicants who applied, including this particular applicant.
Okay, yeah, and I, I mean, I can tell from the board that it doesn't, we even have to have a vote for this. But, yeah, I guess I just looked at it differently. It wasn't like we were accommodating them. They were actually accommodating us by being available to have an interview today. So it wasn't like we were going to have to come together some other time, just to make that work.
I appreciate that. And I wanted to say, Tim and Jason, and everyone else who offered ideas for accommodations, my first, my initial reaction was, oh, yeah, we can make this work. We can figure out a way. We can do it. And then I started hearing from other boards members as why we necessarily, we shouldn't do it. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness and concern you had for making sure everyone came into the discussion. And, but we will certainly consider all applicants on the fourteenth. All of those seven names that I read, unless anyone pulls their name between now and then. Do I have, have I got the sense of the board without taking a vote? You can make the face, it's okay.
It's, I'm just looking at it, I kind of, I kind of agree with Tim. It's, we do not have to make this appointment. There, we do not have to make this appointment. We can allow thirty days to lapse, and we make that decision to remove that power from our hands and have it appointed by the ISD. So we, we have a perceived time crunch, and we keep calling it accommodations. And if we want to use that word, I think that's okay. But I'm beginning to struggle with, why will we not make accommodations for an interested party, for the board, but we will make accommodations for other things in our school district? And I don't want to use any specific examples, but we're taking a voice away from a potential candidate simply because of scheduling, not for anything else. And a candidate is willing to do whatever in order to interview with us.
That's a solid argument, but it goes back to what we said near the beginning that I heard from Darcy and others, is that we never specified to the larger community that we would be, we would try to make accommodations. Absolutely understand that we should try, but we never noted that we will try. So that we may have lost a couple of candidates who, I know one is up at a cottage and might have been a fantastic candidate and actually had expressed an interest in the past, but didn't realize there was an accommodation possible. So didn't put her name forward. So, again, I get it. I get it.
If you don't ask, you're not going to get an accommodation.
But if we had said in the notes that we put out to the community, hey, we're going to have an interview on the fourteenth, but if you can't make it, we'll try to accommodate, if we had said that, and that's the live and learn part, if we had said that, we might have had two additional candidates that we would have had to Zoom in, that might have, one of whom may have been our next board member, so. I get it, Tim. Also, again, everyone's argument has strong validity. Go ahead, please.
So I think adjusting the board operating procedures and maybe including language of accommodation or scheduling, or whatever we want to call it, could be a good idea. Totally, totally open to that. Jason mentioned the thirty-day trigger, so I just wanted to reflect on that because it was the first time that it came up at the table. That is the law. That is the most important thing, I think, in this entire process, that we get somebody in here and we follow the law and don't let it lap. So I am in definite favor of moving forward to fill it from the Celine Board of Education. I think we know our community the best, and I would prefer this board to appoint.
In my eight years on the board, I've never seen it happen where a superintendent of WISD has had to make that decision. So I don't know how it would even go. She might have just said, hey, what do you think, McVeigh? And then it would have been one person making a recommendation to her. So I don't know. I'd much rather have it more in our hands, to your point, so. I'm giving that ten-second teacher pause.
I think we should, I think we should still just have a voice vote on it, just for the record.
All right. Do you want to frame that, or?
I would, I would make a motion. I would make a motion that the, I mean, I'm going to be in opposition of it, but I would make a motion that the board, the board, board entertain not interviewing any candidates prior to the July fourteenth date as already previously stated in the public release. Does that make sense?
Nope. Try to frame it in the affirmative.
Yeah, he's too negative.
Okay.
That the board only interview.
Interview candidates on July fourteenth, as was previously stated in the public release.
I'm going to do a sidebar now with Betty Yonkey. Did you get that, Betty? Motion, entertaining a motion that the board only interviews candidates on July fourteenth.
I'll second that.
We could also add, but considers all candidates. Is that?
Yes.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
But considers all candidates. But and, okay, it's your conjunction.
And may consider all candidates. Shall?
May or shall. Now your modifiers come in. We've got the conjunction.
Because, well, the only reason, the only reason I bring up may is because I know what my vote's going to be. And my vote would be contradictory to taking into consideration all candidates if that is included in the motion.
Motion is that the board only interview candidates on July fourteenth and may consider all candidates. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
And Jason has made that motion. Do we have a second?
I guess my only problem with that motion is that we already have that language in the policy.
We don't have any language.
Technically, it says, "Interview all candidates," so if.
And so we're changing it to consider?
Well, no, I don't want to change it to consider. That wasn't in my motion.
I added an addendum that we may consider all candidates.
May and not shall.
So you have to decide if you want that amendment to your motion?
Which is why I wanted may and not shall, because, like I said, I know what my vote's going to be, and I don't want it to be contradictory to considering other candidates.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We've had a fair discussion now. If anyone wants to make a last minute.
I did want to make one point, that we are governing pre-K through high school students, and we absolutely should be making accommodations for our children's education. If we are setting forth a process as an elected board for governmental posting, we should be following the process that we put out to the community. Again, I said it before and I'll say it again, our process and our policies are what give us legitimacy in the actions that we take. And we do a disservice to our community when we are not faithful to those commitments. I know that we are a small community. We are all friends and family and know each other very well, and that this might not feel like an official or formal process, but it is. And I take that job seriously.
I agree with you, and I was, I was just going to let us go down the road. But just to, just to point out, and again, I'm reading it verbatim, it does not say that we can or cannot provide accommodations. So my argument to counter that would simply be, in our public release, we did not say that we absolutely will not make accommodations. So you can argue it from both sides. And I knew Michael was going to react that way, which is why I didn't bring up that argument. But if we put out in the public release that we would be willing to do accommodations, it'd be out there. If we put in the release that we would not be willing to do accommodations, it would be out there. Neither was out there. In the absence of that, I would look at what is written, which is, "The board or an ad hoc committee shall interview," since I know you and I like the shells in the maze, "shall interview all interested candidates to ascertain their qualifications." So that's why, but I just wanted to stop the argument. I wasn't going to go on both sides, so.
And considering that the board isn't here tonight, the full board, it's almost moot. But perhaps I shouldn't say anymore and just put it to a vote at this point? Jennifer, did you? I will re, I will re-read it. The motion, entertaining is that the board only interview candidates on July fourteenth and may consider all candidates. All in favor, please, say. Oh, we should do a voice vote. It's going to be right down the middle, I think. Jason?
Nay.
Okay, sorry, I just want to write, sorry about that. Jennifer?
Yay.
Yay. Michael, me, yay, but Darcy?
Aye.
Aye. Darcy, contrarian. Tim?
Nay.
All right, great, thank you. So three, two, just a simple majority vote tonight. So on July fourteenth, we will consider all the candidates that evening. That's great. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to, oh, sorry, administrative board, administrator board updates. This is where you get, you get to run, start us off with any of your administrative updates.
Yes, I, oops.
Yeah?
Yes, we have lots of great work happening in the district. I've been here for a week, so I will give you a kind of a rundown. We have some great planning, planned three days next week with our central office and district leadership team. So we have about three days full of planning then. All kinds of great work with our principals I had in early August, engaging on fun projects when Rex comes back from his well-deserved vacation. And as I said earlier, just very grateful to be here and can't wait to continue to dig in so you can get my lengthy, lengthy board updates that I'll try to keep under a certain amount of minutes moving forward. But I will keep it short and sweet as I'm just diving in with the team this week. Thank you.
Thank you. We started, Tim's in. Tim, anything to add?
Yeah. So I noticed on six twenty-four, the WISD adopted a resolution to place the CTE millage on the ballot. So that'll be on the ballot on November fourth, so that'll be great for Celine and Boshna County. Also, I will be talking to Jeff Higginsworth, Plant Moran, regarding this year's upcoming audit on seven fifteen, July fifteenth.
I hope everyone's having a great summer. The only thing I wanted to mention was that Summer Fest is coming up, August eighth and ninth. And we've had guests before, but Ms. Celine will be, the new Ms. Celine will be crowned on Saturday, the ninth.
Thank you. Super. Yeah, I spent four days in hot, stinking San Antonio, but it was a beautiful conference. The ISTI, the International Society for Technology and Education, plus ASCD, which is the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. Some of you know I was on that board of directors and rolled off. So this time, I got to enjoy the conference and attend many, many sessions and meet many, many friends. I only wish there had been some sessions on AI. And that's the joke, because there was, every single session was about artificial intelligence, as it was, our AI, all the way down, as Dr. Seuss would say. So anyway, I'm looking forward to sharing some of the insights I got and some of the cool tools a little later. Thank you.
I know we're missing our friend, Dr. Lauren Gold, tonight, but my first request would be, I'd like to formally request that in our next policy meeting, we put the appointment process on the agenda for our board operating procedures, so it's fair to the process and fair to the people. So thank you in advance. I know Lauren will watch this. Number two, I just wanted to say what a wonderful opportunity I had. My daughter is on the Celine University cheer team, and I was asked to help chaperone some of the student athletes out to Honolulu. Coach Kathy was already there, as she is an, a Coach Kathy mutter. It was already there because she is an instructor in the program, along with other wonderful high school and college coaches from the University of South Florida and Penn State. Both girls and Coach Kathy represented our district very, very well. I'm very proud of them all. Coach Kathy also doubled as the camp nurse, and if you've ever done anything like that, you know how, how much work that is to do with a hundred student athletes. So thank you to all of them for representing Celine very well. I also have been at the high school a lot the past couple of days because many programs are back, back up there at Celine High School. Just a friendly reminder, we have a lot of new drivers going up there for activities as we welcome incoming freshmen and have our other students back. I did see a few things going on the last couple of days, so just remember to drive safely, please. There are kids walking all over the place and a lot of new drivers, so thank you in advance for that. And then number four, I just wanted to, again, welcome Rachel. We're really glad to have you. Or I should say, I'm really glad to have you. I'm sure the board can speak for themselves, but I've talked with so many teachers and so many staff members and so many community members who are eager to meet you and to see your positive influence on our district, so welcome again.
That was a tough assignment you got, Honolulu. I'm just going to be short. I saw a couple posts on social media from rocks about all the activities that the operations team is doing. They're doing a fantastic job. Jay gave us the update. I just want to remind everybody that the school keeps functioning year-round. Even though it's summer break for the kids and most of the teaching staff, the district still functions year-round, except for A, us sitting here in July. But everybody's doing a fantastic job getting ready for next year. Nothing stops. And every, everyone is just doing a fantastic job. So I just want everybody to remember to recognize our operations staff, administrative staff, everybody that's working year-round.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, board. Items scheduled, oh, consent agenda, please. The consent agenda is listed in this agenda and will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that anything be treated, considered individually. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed.
I would like to point out just one thing, that it's enumerated incorrectly.
A, B, C, B. Are you sure B doesn't come after C?
I'm pretty sure A, B, C, B, C, D, E, G is incorrect.
Wait, 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 Einstein. Slow down.
Okay.
Sorry, I got it right. Thank you very much. A, B, C, D, E, F, and that's a, we'll call that a Scrivener's error for the record. All in favor, oh, sorry, do we have a motion yet? That's Jason. Are you moving?
Yes, I have motioned to.
With a, as amended.
Yes, as amended.
And support from, sorry, from Jennifer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So has it A, B, C, D? Is that how it goes?
I think D comes after C, yes.
Oh, thank you. Are there any items scheduled on the next agenda, Superintendent Kowalski, that you're aware of at this point?
Not that we're aware of at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. A member of the public can now speak for up to three minutes. Your request to be scheduled. There are no students speaking, but we do have one member of the public who wishes to speak, and Julie Kelly, the microphone is yours. And the, just take one. In the absence of a red card and a yellow card, we have a mauve card and a canary yellow goldenrod card. Perhaps we should get an art teacher to work on this.
I've practiced in time for myself. I'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening. I am Julie Kelly. I am the teacher you have been, or I guess I should say, the board, interested board candidate that you have been discussing without being able to discuss my name. I would have been fine. So I am a newly retired teacher. I'm still very passionate about our district, and I would really like to. and I would really like to make a difference and continue to make a difference. So I am a person who wants to serve our district by being appointed to the board. I sadly haven't been able to secure an interview for the vacant board seat yet. I unfortunately have a long-planned trip that prevents me from being here on this July fourteenth date. And I think I have about two and a half minutes left right now to plead my case. I passionately want to serve our students, staff and community. And I brought with me to that end a packet that I'll be giving you after I speak. I heard that's an okay thing. And in this is not only my resume and several other letters of recommendations, some I have given you already and I have some others that are in this packet, from my former boss, Principal Megan DeGrand, from colleagues, from parents of students, former students, and from students themselves. In there also, though, I put in some, my answers to some commonly asked questions of board candidates. So while you won't hear me saying whatever your questions are, I'm guessing these will be similar enough and I hope you will read them. I hope by giving you this packet tonight that you don't only get my dedication, my interest, my passion, but I hope also when you're considering my potential appointment to the board next week, that it will serve as a way for you to get to know a little bit more about me. I'm a person of integrity. I listen thoughtfully. I seek diversity of thought. I think critically. And ultimately, I'm compelled to make decisions in the best interest of others. And I hope it will help you to see what I could bring to this board with my knowledge and expertise gained from decades of being a very involved, highly respected Celine Area Schools teacher. With trustees Miller and now Gerby, the K-12 teaching contingent on this board having left, I think maybe now more than ever, my firsthand understanding of how classrooms run, how our staff functions and how our students thrive would be an invaluable addition to this already amazing board. So clearly, I'm passionate about our district and I truly believe I would make a difference. So I humbly ask for your true consideration and that you'll support my candidacy. If you have questions, I am willing to answer them. Thank you. See, I'm under my three.
Ten seconds remaining. Thank you very much, Julie. I appreciate that. Thank you. Oh, oh, yeah.
Going to hand you the packets?
Uh, shoot. Well, we're going to be wrapping up the meeting in the next twenty seconds. How about right after that?
Sounds good. Thank you.
The next Board of Education meeting will be held on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. That's, right, that, that's our interview evening. There'll be one other piece of business that night, so. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting at, what is the magic time? Seven forty-four?
Motion to adjourn.
JT?
Second.
Tim Austin, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Ha ha. No one ever is opposed. Thank you very much. And congratulations on your first board meeting, first of many, 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 many.